I call this meeting to order. The meeting of June 7th, beginning at 6:35. I'd like to make a roll call of the members. John Ranlett, Paul Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, Dick Lewis, Bob Dragon as an alternate, Ray Gosnies, Selectman's Representative, alternate, and Mike Ahern is absent.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Paul Wilson, he said he couldn't, no, it's okay. He said he couldn't make the other meeting, but he may show up, so we'll, but we have enough for a forum, so we're good.
Is there any public comments? And administrative matters, approval of minutes, 5:30, 12.
Does anyone need a copy of the minutes?
I think I do.
And page six? I like that one. Do you have approval of the minutes?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Seconded by John Ranlett. Everybody agree, say aye.
Aye.
And is there any correspondence matters?
I just have FYI stuff, I can pass it out just as easily now because I don't really need to speak to it, this is self-explanatory, if you want to pass it around. And on June 21st, which is our regular public hearing, Plymouth State University is going to be doing a public hearing presentation on the museum. They spoke to us, I think it was last month, as an introductory thing, and now they're coming back for the real deal, but because it's a governmental institution, it's a non-binding site plan review, but it'll be informative. So that gives some better background, the document that I just passed out on the museum, and informative. And I have once again, more updates on your mailing, on your member roster list, because Mike Ahern changed his email again, so, just trying to keep current.
Why do we have to have that university come before us, since we can't do anything about it?
We don't have to, it's optional, but I just felt, and they, the university felt in the interest of being informed, giving some positive feedback input. A couple things I think they took to heart from this last meeting, and just, you know, so the public knows, so there isn't, for one thing, any conjecture that something might be going on under the radar, or, you know, it's, a public forum isn't usually bad, informational. I mean, some of these RSAs are a little quirky, but we have to live with them, so we're good.
All right, and moving on to item six, reports of the committees. Board of Selectmen, Dick?
I guess just the one thing that comes to mind is the board at the last meeting, and you were actually, I think, absent that night, is just kind of started talking about sort of issues on our plate, that we would be discussing over the next, you know, six or seven months, or next year. Obviously, one issue is going to be returning to the Public Safety Building, which will involve plenty of board action and input. And obviously, we would be looking for input from any other board committee as far as, you know, things that the Board of Selectmen should be looking at, or focusing on, or paying attention to, so, that was about it.
Did they post a date as far as whether bringing that up again?
It's going to be sort of, it's going to be kind of an ongoing topic.
Conservation Commission?
He's not here, I guess he is going to be absent somewhere, this date.
So, Board of Adjustments, Sharon?
Oh, we met on Tuesday, and for those of you who were here a little earlier for the master plan workshop I was mentioning, there's a great little home business, not a home occupation by definition, because they're doing retail sales, but a nice little bakery, which is predominantly retail, not eat-in, but possibly retail, some retail on-premise sales, and a lot of retail off-premise sales, at the end of Cooksville Road, in John's neighborhood. And that's great. It's a perfect place, they're using their own kitchen, I mean, there's no site plan review at this point, because they're not expanding anything. They passed muster with the state, they have their license, and they just needed a special exception to go ahead, which they were granted by the ZBA, which is, which is good, like to encourage that. That's it.
Lauren Sewell, I have nothing to report, but they have been out there draining their fire hydrants.
Washington hydrants?
Yes. And the Plymouth-Lochette River Local Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly?
They're starting to make a new set of plans as far as the corridor is concerned with overlays and all that stuff, which is probably about the 33rd time in the last five years that they've done it. And other than that, there wasn't too much going on.
I, in reference to that, I did get requests from the Lakes Region Planner to go through more of our zoning and see, you know, whole roster of, you know, do you have this, do you have that, so I'll be putting that together to help them update their database on the overlay, if need be.
Plymouth Regional Emergency Management Committee?
We've not met.
Not met. And Town Planner Report?
Well, we've just, maybe it's the season, but we've had a lot of walk-in business for entrepreneurs, vendors, folks wanting to start home-type businesses, a lot of them are food-oriented. Hopefully, they'll fly, but it's, it's nothing that, other than FYI, comes to any level for the board, it's mostly, we've got a permit, maybe a little construction and building permit, something like that. A lot of interest in people kind of doing it themselves, which I guess hopefully is a sign of some sort of economic recovery, or, not the inverse, everybody's a pushcart.
They're unemployed, so they've got a stat.
Well, no, they actually, they seem to be folks that have come here to retire, or whatever, second homes, and they're doing some creative stuff, so.
So the only thing that we really need to keep an eye on is if, I mean, trans?
Parking and stuff like that, yeah.
Parking and traffic?
That's at the code enforcement officer level, and then if it gets bumped up, it gets bumped up.
Do you know if, like, that place that is doing that home business, if that changes their tax status at all?
I honestly don't know. You mean, you mean their, their property tax?
Their property tax.
I don't think so. I wouldn't think it, some formula, or, or maybe the business tax, they have to pay a business tax at the state offices?
Well, they have to pay the state, but then pay, I'm talking about the town of Plymouth.
Yeah, that's not my bail, I know they're going to have to pay something, and I know the business tax is there.
Yeah, I know, but that's the state.
Right, I realize that.
They're putting that in 93 down, down in Litchfield.
I don't know, but as far as like a beautician shop, and like, stuff like that, I don't think that it changes.
I don't think so either.
I don't think so, or if attorneys.
Your building value?
Something like that, I think.
Well, it's your assessment, that's where the change comes in. I don't think the tax rate changes, but there's.
Right, I understand that.
Why would the assessment change? You don't add on, why would the assessment change? Right?
Well, right, if you don't, but some do.
Right.
And then we haven't, we haven't quantified that, so.
Turning to hardwood floors.
I think, you know, it's kind of a lame answer, but I think it's case-by-case business basis, depending on if they really expand, or, but I would think it would just be, you know, square footage and stuff like that, so. I, we can check, we can look, I can ask Kate, or, I can ask Kate.
Do you have the answer by mail, email?
Uh, yeah, I'll have Kate.
Some problem I find on that is, is if you have a residence out there, you're not getting any income from it at all, so your taxes, and, so, now you become the business, you get income coming into that same building, and you still have the same taxes. It just, just.
Yeah.
Should be some crap.
They're paying the IRS. They're paying the IRS.
Yeah, I know, but IRS goes to Iraq, and, and.
I know what you're saying.
Okay? And the state goes down to Litchfield building in 93, but Plymouth doesn't get anything out of it.
Well, I'll check it out, because it's not my bailiwick, but.
I can just say, I mean, here again, your property tax is based on the value of your home, you just can't, just because people have a small home business, you just can't say their home is suddenly worth more, you have to have a basis to make that change. If they add on, if they're paving a parking lot, or something, that's different, I'm saying. Just because they're selling something, you can't go in and say, okay, that's.
Under our present tax structure, you can't do a thing with it.
If it becomes commercial, you're going to zone as commercial, but in most of these cases, they're not.
See, this is why I am strictly for income approach on, on commercial businesses.
Well, I agree with that, but that's never been the history in New Hampshire.
All right, can move on to item seven, new business.
We have Mr. Aaron Shepherd, who is the Director of the Plymouth House out on North Main Street, who's going to come in and give us just kind of an informal presentation on what's happening down there. There's been a lot of visual changes, some houses have gone down, some properties have been acquired, and it just seems to be time to do an update. I think they'll find you some sort of.
Yes, maybe something that just, it's not the biggest.
Should have a tray on it.
Well, you know what, Aaron, if you don't mind, we can do it the old-fashioned way.
Absolutely.
That's the Plymouth House.
Oops.
Don't know.
There we go.
Oops, you're calling again.
And Mike can come up and teach us.
Yeah. It's not, it's not huge, but you can.
Want to?
Another nonprofit.
Perfecto.
Yeah.
Um, maybe.
You see them, or whatever.
You folks, well, it wasn't you personally, it was your predecessor who was here.
Right, right, who was here, I think.
Yeah, kind of, maybe this time last year, for site plan review for the new office building, that everybody had a look at. So, maybe you want to just take it from there, and tell us what happened, and.
We can flip this thing down, it's got a lip on it.
Does it? Oh, good, I didn't know that.
Say, where's the tray, it did have one.
Yeah, it does.
Is it on the other side?
No.
Did you?
This project?
No, I didn't have any copies, this, he didn't send me anything, it's just kind of show and tell. Oh, who knew?
Why isn't it, hang on. Do you know how this works? Nope. Wait, here we go. Pull it towards you.
The Navi?
Yeah. And I think it.
I thought that was just going to erase me, okay.
All right.
There we go.
Well, a lot has happened since the Plymouth House was back in front of the planning board a year or so ago, I don't remember exactly when it was here, but, by a lot, I think, what people have noticed is we, if you look at the real estate transactions in town, we've noticed that the Plymouth House, the owner of the Plymouth House has purchased most of North Main Street, it seems. And I'm sure that people are wondering, what are we doing, where are we going, what are we going to do with all that land? And then you've seen a number of houses disappear, as part of that. And a lot of that was just, really just our opportunity that arose out of the current, you know, economic situation in Plymouth, and that our neighbors were interested in moving on, and we saw that there was an opportunity for us to purchase some lands that really made sense in light of what we were really trying to do, and.
All right, just stick to the chair.
Well, perhaps, just.
Some engineer.
No, that's the great thing, I tell you, it's ingenuity.
So, if you can sort of see that these yellow buildings, sort of the Plymouth House proper as everybody used to know, the old known motel, which included the White House, the barn, and then there was a garage on that property, and then finally what we call a chapel in the staff house.
You guys built the garage.
We built the garage, we built the garage.
Pat, Pat used to own.
I used to own the known motel.
Yeah, so he's got some.
We built the garage, and obviously the barn, and this, the motel was torn down and rebuilt, along the same footprint, so that was actually, I guess, a renovation. And then when we were in front of the planning board a year or so ago, was to build this office building here, which we have completed, and you can start to see the landscaping starting to happen, and so you can sort of get a sense of what we're trying to do out front of it, is our reception area, which is our new reception area of the Plymouth House. This stuff, this is the Crowley Metal Storage Building, that Bob sold us his house, his house was somewhat right here, that's disappeared, we bought a meal, I'm not sure, our.
Harry Penny.
Harry Penny's property, and that, that is gone, and that was right up against our office building. And this is the long storage building that the Crowleys were, were using, which is still there, and will remain. So these buildings all will remain, and this is the McWilliams House, we call it, which we have purchased, which we're in the process of renovating, which will just be a single-family residence for somebody that works, it's a family that's living there. So not unlike a boarding school, we very much run the Plymouth House in the same way you'd run a small boarding school, we need live-in staff, we need houses and the staff that are on the property.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four, two days a week. These shaded buildings were our potentially proposed buildings sometime in the future, which may include a dining hall, new dining hall, if we increase our capacity, which we're not sure if we're going to do, and we're not sure if we do it in a large building, or a series of smaller buildings on the property. Most of this here is Camden, we have about seven and a half acres in Plymouth, the line sort of runs like that, so a lot of, I think, the proposed new dining hall might have the in Plymouth and have in Camden, and the dorms could be in either. We have purchased the house beyond this building, so if you look at, which would be here, we purchased this house, and we have also run under agreement on this house right here. So from the underpass to Mary Dergan's house, by next Friday, will be all owned by Tom Shaffer. There is no, we're going to keep this house, there is a possibility that this house, the red house at the very corner, may just appear. It's, it's sinking, amongst other things, this, when the water, oh, goes down this way from the runoff, we're not sure, it makes a whole lot of sense to save it, but this house, the White House, a very sort of New England-looking White House, is going to be brought back to life a little bit, as the McWilliams House is being brought back to life right now.
That's good.
So you can expect both of those houses to sort of have some New England charm, and.
As residences?
As residences.
Change of use?
No, change of use.
Single family?
Single family. Again, we have other staff families that might live in the Sackett House, I'm not sure, we haven't identified anybody yet, but that would be the use of those, of those buildings.
That's nice, because that keeps the look of it very nice, in New England houses. The Williams House is a beautiful house.
Yeah, and that's why we're keeping it, it's cost us a lot to renovate.
Yeah, the outside needed a lot of work.
We couldn't duplicate it, replicate it, and have the same charm, sort of swelling away.
Right. Used to be a B and B years ago.
Oh, did it?
Bed and breakfast.
It's, it's quite a nice house, and it's in good shape, and the Sackett House is a very nice, it's in good shape, it just needs to be, and we'll, purchasing that brand sort of house will allow us to sort of make this yard a little nicer, and more usable. Yeah.
I have a question, on the reverse side.
Sure.
Is there, where you've got on the right hand, or left, your left, yeah, when you're showing those lines over there, is that just like a wetland, wetlands, like you can't build on it, is that what that's showing us, right there?
This is a stream, yeah, it's just a, that runs through the property, yeah.
So it will be wetland?
Well, that's Camden.
Okay.
Is it, yeah, I mean, it is water, it's water that goes from, through, underneath the highway, and through, and then it, it daylights out across the street, and then down to the Pemmy through, I believe, the, behind Crowley, Bob Crowley's house, and it works its way down to the Pemmy. So the water goes this way, and then it goes this way, sort of that, so that is there, and that's.
Where's the old Tom Gad place? I know it's across the street.
Across the street, right across the street from the Plymouth 12th House main driveway.
Right, yeah, right over there, oh, that's small, that Bob owns the other one.
Right, yeah.
And then there's another White House here, and then, and then I think Pemmy Drive.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's your plan on the, on Crowley's metal building?
We, we are in the process of designing sort of a new facade for it, to make it look more like a barn, we're big on.
Doing, doing more.
Yeah, so we have yet to apply for a building permit, we don't have our final design down, but Tom Morrison was up there today poking around, and we're just sort of trying to figure out what's the best use of, it, it's just a storage building, maintenance building for us.
Right.
But how to make it sort of be a little less prominent.
And limited.
Yeah, so we're thinking about extending sort of a front piece, and painting it, changing the roof, so it fits along with the theme of the Plymouth House, which is green metal roofs.
Yeah.
And then, the, what we're calling the carriage building, is actually going to continue to be a storage building, but we're going to turn it into looking like a horseback, so a little half, a little painted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So, I think you need, you know, it's, it's clear that when you drive by, there's been a tremendous amount of work being done, and it's slowly starting to look like the rest of the Plymouth House, it had, you know, this main area, and what we've done in landscaping will be carried through throughout the whole property, a white picket fence, and in fact, we've extended some of the fencing out, to include getting closer to the circle, and once we have our drainage permit through DES, we'll, we'll pave this area, which we've been permitted for, and then I think you'll go back to seeing the Plymouth House.
I just saw copies from DOT for your driveway permits.
Right, so we have gotten that, but we're, we're a ways from paving until we figure out, we, we still need the drainage, the permit to.
This is kind of something Brian and I were talking about, I think I may have mentioned to you, to you folks, but I think that the board needs to, relatively soon, we're going to have some tweaking of the zoning ordinance, but we really need to kind of expound upon, if not expand, campus. Not necessarily, I know this is, this is substance abuse, and, and has an educational component, but, I mean, you have essentially, you have campus up on Boulder Point Road with all the medical offices and stuff, so we kind of need to get our hands around what the campus idea is, I mean, related uses in parcels.
Definition of that.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, these folks have an opportunity to acquire parcels, that's kind of unusual, I mean, you're lucky in that as your needs, you know, you expand or whatever, that the parcels are there, but I think we need to get a handle on campus, and make it clear by definition, so that when we do come to site plan review, we know when we need to ask for it, and when we don't need to ask for it, and it's just, I mean, it's, as with a lot of other land use issues, as things evolve, that's how you figure out that you didn't have the pieces in place, so we need to, that's one of the reasons I asked Aaron to come tonight, so he could kind of, you know, give us some information, and kind of maybe hopefully set people's minds at ease that, A, you weren't going to take over the town, and, B, you probably have bought up everything there is to buy, you're kind of maxed out.
Well, yeah, there's not, I mean, there's not, for us, there's not much need beyond what we've purchased, and those are really purchases that, that made sense in light of what we were trying to do to the, the property here, and expand it.
Because you haven't, you haven't expanded your.
We haven't expanded our bed.
Your bed numbers, correct?
No, we've not expanded our bed numbers, and, and we don't necessarily intend to at the moment, I think, looking down the road, there will be, there will be some sort of expansion, I'm not sure in what way, whether it's a 12-bed, small little dorm somewhere back here, or three of them, or, or, ultimately, I think we envision growing to about 72 beds, which would be double our current capacity, but that's somewhere in the next.
We have 36 beds now?
We have 36 beds, more or less, yeah.
I did get the information from your engineer, if you want to speak to the impervious surface on that.
I don't know if I'm the best person to speak to, other.
You're okay, I guess.
Yeah, we're okay, I mean, I guess we are okay.
You're, you're okay in, in both configurations, whether it were one entity or.
Right, we're gonna, there's some pavement that went away, and there's some pavement that's going to be included, and then there's going to be, I think what Dave calls it, our engineer, is a, with the drainage system, under, under this front parking lot, whatever increase in impervious surface, it will, it will just go back into the soil, so it's a fairly, that was what his.
Infiltrate.
Infiltrate.
Yeah.
So right now, it would be this area, what was the Crowleys', and then it would be going up to where we are here in the staff housing, and, and then it stops, and this is just a, really, fire access road, that right now was like that. At some point, it may loop our campus as we go further, but right now, it just connects here, kind of about this garden, and the fire department wishes us to have, so they can access any of these buildings at any time, from any angle.
Are you folks thinking at some point of merging these lots, just as?
Yeah, we're trying to decide, a lot of that has to do with the owner's sort of estate planning, and where.
Oh, I see, okay.
He's somewheres, some.
I mean, you'd probably get a tax break if you did, but.
Right, right.
It's up to you.
Yes, we do pay.
But just as long as you're aware that that's still, still.
We have not merged the lots, we treat it as we wanted it, but we have not merged the lots, and we may merge some of this stuff, but.
Right, some of those are kind of small lots anyway.
Yeah, exactly. A lot of our, I mean, we have about seven and a half acres in Plymouth, and then there's 16-plus acres in the Camden, that came out of the Bartlett Motors, the house.
That's big.
Yeah, it's quite a big.
How many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen or so, I think it's 16 and a half, we have almost 22 and a half acres, I guess. A lot of which is just kind of tucked up in the corner behind the Dergan property, which is terribly usable, nonetheless.
Just, just a couple, kind of in that little nook between the carriage house?
Yes.
And, is that a new?
This is, this is potentially, we weren't sure if the property weighted was, whether we wanted to put something like a gatehouse or something down here, just to give the, this end of the property some anchor, because it was kind of open, but again, it's a proposed, just as these are, and we're trying to develop a master plan, and just seeing where the weight, we were fairly heavily weighted right here, and did we want to sort of spread out?
So, so. So, this is conceptual master plan, so is it fair to say that you folks are still trying to figure out?
I would say, yes.
The overview?
And it's changing, and it's changing all the time. And having purchased the Sackett house really means we are rethinking whether we'll even do something here. So every time we've made another purchase, it resets what we might have.
Effects what your thoughts are.
Because, you know, we really would like to, you know, once you get to a point where it's fairly static, you know, maybe take another, take another gander at it, see where you are at that point in time. I realize you are in flux.
Yeah, and it may be some, we won't have a decision on it. The next building we're going to build is a, I believe, a smaller dorm somewhere back here, within the next, I would say, year to two years, but we haven't even designed it yet, but that's what our thinking is.
Well, I know you've established, I mean, we've met several times, and Justin and you and then Brian and I, and the four of us back and forth, so, you know, we've established, I just want the board to know that we have established a working relationship, so none of this is done, you know, in.
It's not a surprise of the town, I mean, to share in a brand. I think, I think a lot of what has happened is the Plymouth House, we've always been this big, you just couldn't see us.
Right.
And we were sort of hidden, and I think it speaks to the kind of job we do there, which is you've got a drug and alcohol, drug and alcohol treatment center that no one knows about. And the only reason why they know about it now is because houses are disappearing.
Right.
Or they think we're part of the Beckett School, or they think we have something to do with the new electricity poles going up or things like that.
Poles go up and houses disappear.
Substation.
And we don't like those either, particularly. But, so I think it's all of a sudden, it was a lot of things happening at once, and we had not grown for some time in terms of acquiring properties. We had acquired the back of the McWilliams property some time ago.
Right.
And our intention is really to keep this, is just sort of open, we've done, keep this out sort of open and.
I'd just like to say that you guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I don't know whether anybody's talked about it or looked at it, or, but it looks to me like there's six proposed, or is, six driveways going on there, going into Route 3?
Yeah. Those are all, all of those curb cuts have been there.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing?
Yeah.
So I didn't mark through.
This is, in fact, is a very big one that.
Well, the Bartlett Motors was, yeah.
Right, so we're not going to expand that. We're going to try not to lose our curb cuts either.
Right.
They're hard to get back once you give them away.
So what you're going to do is you have a main entrance now, and you're going to pretty much move it down.
This is going to be, I mean, you know, there isn't much in and out. The only in and out of the Plymouth House is deliveries for food, the staff that works there that doesn't live on the property. Once a guest comes, the guests will stay for anywhere from four to six weeks, and they're not driving. And if they do drive, their car sits in the lot and doesn't move. So there's our vans that come and go. There's just the daily business of running a kitchen for, you know, 50 folks, and then the staff that comes and goes. So this will be the main drop-off area for incoming guests. Families themselves will come here, enter into the property. If they drive themselves, their cars will be back in here, and then people who are, the drop-off will go ahead and leave. So I don't think we'll be increasing too much.
How close to the overpass is your entrance going to be when you change it?
It's, it's quite, it must be. It's not a problem. I couldn't tell you how far it is, but it's longer than I'd like to walk.
Probably half a mile?
Maybe, you know, more than a quarter mile, probably a little less than a half mile. So it's, again, that's all the way down here. Maybe you can see it better. Our new entrance is somewhere in here, and that's where that passes.
That's where the little red house is.
Yeah, that's where, that's the red house, and that's the empty house. So it's quite a distance away.
Looks good. Awesome.
You have a question?
Oh, yes, sir.
Well, I understand, Sharon, that you two, of course, is this going to be approved in stages? This is not just one, this presentation is about improvements?
Well, no.
Expansion, whatever. So we're talking various applications for what they want to do?
When, when and if.
Right.
Yeah, when and if. Yeah, this is, this is kind of an.
So it'll be in stages, and it's not all one contiguous approval?
Oh, no, no. They'll be going in stages for anything, but what they're doing right now, Bob, other than demolition and paving, or reconfiguring driveways and stuff, is just acquiring property that they have a right to, anybody has a right to do.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, that says conceptual master plan. I think they have some ideas and thoughts for the future, and they will be having to come before us, but because there was so much activity going on between last year, when they actually built a huge addition that, you know, we needed to look at, and now, I just felt that it was appropriate for them to come and talk to the board at large. Like I said, they.
I just wanted to get in my mind that it was more than just one.
Well, it looks like it could be several different things.
And again, all of this here, this has all been approved and has been done in stages over the last 10 years.
Yes, to the present.
To the present.
Right, there's a lot of.
So there's been a lot of planning board development over the last 10 years in terms of our growth. I think what everybody has seen is houses disappear, and it makes people nervous, and they want to know what are we doing? And we're not a terribly public place for a variety of reasons. We appreciate the quiet, and that our guests really deserve a certain sort of anonymity in being there. But it's our intention to just continue to be a good neighbor and continue to keep the look of the Plymouth House as it had been up to this point. And I think we're, give us two weeks and drive by, and I think you'll be surprised at how nice it looks, and give us a couple months when the grass grows in, and give us two years, and it's going to look as nice as it did two years ago.
It's a beautiful campus.
Yeah. And you're all welcome. I'll be happy to give tours. I'll be happy to show you guys around. So please, I can lend you some cards.
It is a beautiful part of the neighborhood.
I think, I think we're good neighbors. I think we don't have any neighbors anymore.
Well, you're good.
You're good to yourself.
We're good to ourselves. I know Mary likes us up here, and Bob likes us over there, for a variety of reasons. We're not taking. And I think in terms of just land acquisition, we're at our, we don't have any much interest in anything going on, and those houses really made sense in light of just the drainage project.
Strategically, it's a good move. Can you just briefly address the wetlands permit, the drainage fixing problem?
Yeah, with the wetlands permit, what we're asking is to be able to daylight, to put a larger, not a larger, but just to clean out, there's a current series of pipes that go through here and goes out into this wetlands area at the very end of, that was ultimately created by 93. And what we found is all the water just backs up, because it's never really been maintained, and there's never been enough money for any of these individual landowners, homeowners.
Some were the lucky winner.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, to us, it makes a lot of sense, because we are, you know, we are obviously pushing water that way as well. It comes to us, it's going that way, and it was all just sort of backing up in segments. And so we're waiting for the DS to allow us to go across into the, just the, what has always been there, and just pour water that way.
So that ponding that you had in the back?
Yes.
In that open area, that's going to eventually.
That will go away.
Mitigate it, yeah.
Eliminated.
Eliminated, we hope. That's the idea. We've eliminated a lot of that with just re-rating, just doing a.
I know you mentioned that for the folks that came for the site plan review last year.
But it's really, all these, all these yards back here are just, it's just a mess. And so we are still waiting, we have been, it's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
Get a permit.
We started to flood most springs behind the barn.
Yeah, exactly.
I have pictures of my kids canoeing around the barn.
Yeah, we have a little pond, yeah, exactly. So, and we're thinking we're going to get approval any time in the next couple weeks.
Well, DS is very good about copying the town and stuff, so I've got all your permits. Yep, yep.
Again, that's not my thing, particularly, but nonetheless, I'm always waiting to do that. I think, again, it's all within what makes sense in terms of money and the wetland.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
But again, please, feel free to call me, I'm there. I'll give you a tour, I'll show you around. We're happy to let people know. It's quite an interesting place to look at, and once you get on the campus and you start to stand, you'll see sort of what was happening. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And when you, you know, when you do decide to build something that, you know, other than a lemonade stand or something, we do want to see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we already know that, because we've had the conversation several times, so.
Absolutely.
Great, well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for keeping us in the loop.
Well, thank you for having us, and sorry we haven't been by sooner, it's just been busy.
Well, you've been doing things.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Voluntary lot merger, Plymouth Woods, L T.
Yes, Plymouth Woods, as we all know, that's all done deal, don't anybody panic, because as they say, just the paperwork. They finally got around to, and I've just, you folks need to vote on this, so I'll just give you the paperwork. But what they're doing is just merging all those bazillions of lots in the old Bico subdivision that is now Plymouth Woods. And I just have to get, hopefully, a motion to approve the lot merger, so I can do the paperwork, so they can take it to Havel and get it changed at the registry of deeds.
Thank you, please.
But if you'll note, if you'll note on the voluntary merger sheet, there's quite a few lots in there, and those were all formerly Bico Mountain View Farms.
Some of them are small, too, huh?
Yeah, well, yeah.
They were house lots.
Yeah, little teeny house lots.
Front on the floor.
Oh, that was something, like a screen space or something, but.
It's a garden.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, should I open?
You can if you want, if you think we need discussion. If not, then just make the motion, and you get to sign the, if the motion passes.
Michael, would you approve the voluntary lot merger?
Second. Say aye.
Aye.
And you get opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.